I saw it.
Yeah, I heard it. I drove by it.
Oh, new one?
It's like a, it's like a.
Oh, I know it was. It's right over here.
It's already there. And it's on me there. All the structure is there.
They're new.
It's all two by four.
It's four by fours. Oh, we already got that in?
There's this famous steel sink.
Yeah, he's dangerous for sure. He does. But he's through game.
I didn't know if they're just gonna put out like a tire.
I don't think so, because he's.
And it's got like nice, like Joyce are like nice.
Yeah, he's.
What's going on?
I know exactly where.
You're gonna rattle the neighbors.
Are you gonna call any, they didn't call me yet?
I don't like it going anywhere.
Good evening, everybody. We'll get started with the planning commission meeting of August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. We will start with pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Katie, could you please call the roll?
Baker.
Here.
Bill.
Cox.
Frisone.
Here.
Hutchinson.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Hyatt. Upholzer. And I think Mayor Schumate is gonna make an announcement, but Commissioner Wood has resigned.
Do we have a motion to excuse absent members?
Motion to excuse.
Moved and supported, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, do we have public comment for matters that are on the agenda?
Good evening, everyone. Garrett Schumate, three one one four zero Island Drive. Public comment relevant to matters on the agenda, which is the resignation of John Wood. We accepted the resignation at council, so I want to make sure that everybody was aware of that resignation. We express a lot of gratitude to John for his service, not only on these commissions, but more broadly for the city of Gibraltar. And we've been actively exploring who will be appointed to that seat. So what I would ask of all you commission members is, well, we can take that offline for discussion, but if you have anybody in this community that you think would be a strategic fit for this set of commissions, we would love to consider them as council makes that appointment. I'd like to have that appointment made on the twenty-fifth, so that you would roll into the next meeting for planning and DDA with a filled seat. Any questions, comments for me on that front? Awesome, thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and supported, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okey doke. Do we have approval of the previous meeting minutes of July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we do have acknowledgement of correspondence. There is a letter to the planning commission from a resident. Do you mind covering that as well?
I can give some overview to this. The letter dated August eighth, twenty twenty-five is from a neighbor of three zero four seven five Adams Drive, bringing your attention to a structure that has begun on construction under, next door, along the shoreline. I believe it's a gazebo type structure. And there's, the letter outlines the concerns in terms of the sightline and the fact that this does not appear to meet the zoning ordinance. I'll share from the building department. I talked with them today. They had, are aware of this. They have been in discussion with the owners of the property, is my understanding. The owners of the property did come in to put in a permit application for that structure today. Previously was not permitted. And I know just from looking at the plans that have been shared with me from that permit discussion that it does not meet the sightline setback requirements for accessory structures. But because they just pulled that permit today, I know there's a code enforcement awareness of this as well, but that's, that's currently where it's at. There's no definitive conclusion as we work through that process with the homeowner in denying the permit. And then they can exercise their options, whether they want to go to the ZBA or potentially remodel and reformat where that structure is on their lot.
Pretty much already up.
Well, in general, this is not a planning commission issue. It's a building commission issue.
Yeah. It's a building and ordinance issue right now. Yep.
That's all? I just wanted to give that update.
Yeah, thank you for the update.
So you need a receive and file motion?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
We have support? Moved and supported, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Do we have public comment for matters that are not listed on the agenda? Okey doke. We will go to unfinished business. This is sign review number two for two nine two five five West Jefferson Avenue, the Dollar General.
Yes.
Do you want to provide an update? And last time, I believe it was that we left it that we wanted to make sure that it followed our request of nautical.
Yes, that's correct. So the Dollar General has resubmitted their sign application to comply with the request for the nautical theme, which they've added anchors, they've added some of the kind of pilings around their wall sign, the posts with rope wrapped around them. That is up to all of you to discuss, whether it meets the nautical theme requirement. I will add, there have been some changes to the signage since their last application that is not necessarily in compliance with the zoning ordinance. They did add an additional small kind of accessory sign above the doorway, the entryway, with the DG initials with anchors on both sides, which the ordinance only allows one wall sign. Also up for your discussion, that main sign, they did kind of make a little bit smaller on the side of the building. It's, it's so close to the square footage requirements that it does feel like it's, it's almost splitting hairs in terms of measurement. But it's slightly over the square footage requirement, but they did add those anchors on both sides. And the existing save more sign that was on that post has been turned into a ground sign across the driveway to the south. And the ground sign is where they have those kind of pilings with the ropes attached to continue that nautical theme. So this, this portion has changed from that pole sign. That's, these are the items for your discussion. The, again, the, the things that I called out in terms of the setback on the ground sign can also be for your consideration. It is essentially the same footprint, just to the south regarding the setback as the pole sign was on the north side of the driveway. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but those were the major changes. Those were my notes in terms of what is allowed by the ordinance.
Jane, was the original save more sign non-conforming?
It was.
Because the new one, really, we're talking a five inch square.
It's so.
That's it. It's, it's just five inches square. That's where it's just out of conformance.
The, the save more sign was much larger.
Yeah, I don't personally have an issue with it, and I think they.
No, I.
I'm actually surprised too, quite honestly, because Dollar General is such a brand. They, they came back with some.
And the reality is probably those anchors are actually, is what's pushing it out of compliance.
Yeah.
Quite honestly, yeah, I agree with you. Yeah, 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 I don't, I mean, up for discussion with the team for sure.
Yeah, I think that one's fine. I think to me, the big question is the secondary sign at the entryway. And I don't personally have a problem with it. It's in there, it's, it's in.
It's in the gable area.
There. It's not like it's another thing that's outside of the building footprint itself. So I personally don't have a problem with it, but that's probably something we want to discuss.
The monument sign bothers me a little bit, only because of the setback. I mean, based on the photo, the shrubs are hiding half of that sign coming from the south. And I suspect, once they realize that, they might decide that that sign is gonna get a little bit closer to Jefferson, because unless they're gonna cut down the hedges.
The shrubs could go. Yeah, I was looking at that too.
They'd have to cut the tree down to be able to push it back to get the additional, what are they, three foot short?
Yeah, I think it was twelve feet. It was sitting at twelve feet, right?
It seems like it could impair the line of sight, of sight slightly where it's located, but not too bad to make them change it. But it does seem like if you're headed northbound, that could block the line of sight slightly for pedestrians or vehicles coming out of the parking lot. Whereas before, it was placed differently where it wasn't impairing the line of sight for that turn. But that's, that's where they want to put it.
It is, if you look at the, I don't know if it's the first page or second page of their kind of packet, they show where the sign is in relation to the parking lot. It is just parallel to that curb where the parking lot is cut out to, so it's.
And that one's farther back from the.
Yeah, it's actually further back than.
It's further back than the existing sign.
But it's lower.
Yeah. Yeah, they're gonna remove that existing one and put this one on the south side.
This is the existing.
This was the existing, and this is the.
So it's actually, it's actually more in compli, it's closer to compliance.
So the old one is actually closer to the road than what this one is?
Correct.
Yes.
Yep.
It's right on the side.
Quite a bit.
Right on the side.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, so it's actually better for us.
Yeah.
That's on.
I think.
They don't have page numbers, but.
It's like the second page of the horizontal pages.
Yeah, it's like over, be like the satellite view.
And the wooden post, that's our nautical theme?
Yeah, wood piling.
For the, that's.
For the monument sign.
For the monument sign.
I don't mind the sign itself with the post, that looks good.
Yeah. Fine.
And that meets the theme.
I think I'm okay. I mean, any concerns?
I don't have a problem with it, to be honest with you. It's, it's much more in compliance than what was there before. Is it a hundred percent true to what we're typically asked for? No, but it's, it's a lot better than what it was, and I think it's moving, moved in the right direction. And it's got the nautical themes that we asked for, so I'm okay with it personally.
And they shrunk the wall sign too, right on the.
Yeah, they did.
They shrunk that quite a bit.
They did, yeah.
It was huge before, right? It was gonna be ginormous. Yeah.
Usually Dollar General has a pretty big sign.
It was more the same size as the old save more sign.
It looks pretty strong, huh?
Yeah.
It's in proportion.
Yeah, it looks good.
Do we have a?
Problem with it.
Interest in someone making a motion to? Move forward?
I will. I, I'm okay with it. It's, it's actually better than what it was before, so I'll make the motion that we approve this three signs.
I support it.
Moved and supported, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okey doke, thank you. New business, we have sign review for one four two two one Park Street. This is Riverside Townhomes. And this is way down. Okay. Do you wanna cover your updates there? What's the, is this a?
This, no, those are, those are existing signs.
This is the ones that are.
They're just slapping some logos on there that have.
Yeah. Just to conform with the nautical, correct?
They basically never came to us for approval on the signs they put up.
Yeah, I.
It's a way to get around their lack of not following the rules.
And is this because we had conversations with them following the last meeting and who went?
I believe they're here.
What's that?
I believe they're here.
Hello.
The, I'm, I'm Kelly, I'm making this over there.
Okay.
The sign was put up on the previous owner, previous management, and previous, both of us. So we kind of got thrown into it and then found out that we weren't within compliance. So we had our, some of our sign guys from Lincoln Park that does a lot of our signage create something. And I guess this is, this is our saying, is this what you guys are looking for? Do we need to make more modification? You know, what is it to sure, what is it exactly that you're looking for? Is that all right?
Yeah, I mean, generally, we're looking for, just like with the Dollar General, like nautical theme, I think you, so after reviewing the attempt is obviously like the lighthouses, which somewhat aligns to the lighthouses.
What I would like to see is, is using the timbers rather than the, the four by fours or six by sixes, whatever there, I'd rather see that, that.
So it's consistent.
So it's consistent with what we see, it's with most of the signs in the area.
Do you want to cover, Jane, what you did?
Yeah, so as you mentioned, this sign is existing. The plans really show the addition of the decal, so we didn't have the overall dimensions of the monument sign. It's what I would call it. It's a residential entryway. By, based off of my estimates, it does appear to be less than eighteen square feet. And thirty-six square feet is allowed. I only see this one sign. I guess I didn't pay attention when I went by if there was multiple signs, but one sign is included in what's allowed in terms of the residential entryway signage. And the proposed signage is located at the entrance of the residential development, so no issue in terms of the location of the sign. And then the sign includes two lighthouse images, and it's all up to you all to discuss if that sufficiently meets the nautical theme requirement.
We do have two signs. Yep, we have one at the entrance, closer to Jefferson, and then one at our second entrance, basically right before the curve up here on Jip. One of them faces.
But that's one to each entryway, correct?
Yes, one to each entrance, correct.
I, I don't see an issue if it's one to each entryway.
So it's more the aesthetics portion of the ordinance?
Correct.
Other discussion from the commission?
I, I think it's a little kind of artsy, it's kind of artsy nautical, so I think it's, I like it.
I don't have an issue with it. Looks good.
Got their website on it, it's nice.
Is that just a, uh, vinyl?
Vinyl post cover. Yep, it's just, it's just four by four underneath it.
Or you mean like this, a virus, vinyl sticker?
Well, and is the lighthouse just a vinyl sticker that's eight by eighteen that will be added?
He, the sign guy came out, measured and kind of figured out schematic, what would look right, so it wouldn't look ridiculous and it would look like it belonged there.
Yeah.
Not, not to be a sticker, but that sign's gotta be much bigger than eighteen square feet.
I was, so I, I'll explain how I estimated the, if it's drawn to scale with the decal, if the decal is eight inches by eighteen inches, if you take, that's how I kind of estimate, that was the one. That's the rectangle I worked off from. Now, is that accurate? I don't know. I, that's my explanation of how I, how I came to that dimension.
What's maximum allowance?
Thirty-six.
It's probably, I mean, it's not bigger than thirty-six.
Yeah, it's probably four by eight foot wide, I would imagine.
It's four by eight.
That's what I was thinking.
Four by eight piece.
It's probably a four by eight sheet, and then they added the hat, the triangle at the top.
So it still complies with.
Yeah, it would still be.
It's just framed out with like normal siding stuff and.
Yeah.
The decals are not then to scale?
On the picture.
On the picture.
So they would be smaller then?
Yes.
Yeah, you might. I guess my ask would be if you could, can you get us a rendering with the?
Dimensions?
The dimensions to scale? So if it actually looks like the picture, then it's probably okay.
Both are just little tiny lighthouses on the.
But if they're just little tiny, if they're little tiny ones, then probably not, okay.
Yeah, my guess is they're more like thirty-six inches tall.
Yeah, and like, probably like sixteen inches wide at the bottom, or twelve, or something like that. We need to know that piece, otherwise it'll, yeah, they'll just be like, you know, a little sticker on there.
What about the vinyl on the posts? What are, what are you guys' thoughts on that?
I mean, that's true, does the other sign look just like this?
The other sign looks exactly like this, or it faces a different direction, so to speak, but it looks, height wise, they're very close. But the, the, everything around the outside of it, the way the, the, all the, all the agriculture is done, it's all exactly the same. They're just mirrors of each other.
Okay. I don't know, what do you guys think?
I don't have a problem with posts. You were talking about like the piling style.
Yeah, piling type of.
Yeah, just.
You'd have to box in one of those posts with, one of them, with one of the.
Yeah, that would be nice if we had pilings on there instead of the posts.
Instead of the posts.
You'd probably leave the post, you just box it in.
Yeah, like how theirs, yeah, like, like everybody's sign is done here. Like the Gibraltar sign.
Looked good, but, you know, was that for art, that's.
Yeah.
I don't know. Yes, that's a million dollar question.
Is the only other thing I would say, I don't know that I would, yeah, I'm kind of, I mean, one, I guess my thought is, you kind of inherited it, which is unfortunate that they didn't comply. You're making an attempt to comply. I think it would be cool if we got the right scaled pictures, so that we make sure that it looks like the picture or rendering that you have. The only other thing that I would say is, um, don't we have a, didn't we put a lighthouse on the city sign that we approved? On the Henry Ford, is there, so I wonder, an opportunity to make sure that they're the same, because I'm guessing it's just an image, a generic image, so that they look the same? Other than that, I don't know if I would, I mean, I would like the pilings, but I don't know if then you have to go back and like rework your whole sign, I don't know.
Yeah, twice, that's what sucks.
Yeah. I'm not really like opposed to.
Force them to do that.
Leaving the posts.
Sign as it's pictured, looks good.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, I, I think if, if the decals actually look like this on the sign, you know, the, I don't know what they would take, instead of eighteen inches, maybe they need to be thirty inches.
Yeah, whatever.
But I, but I think if it actually looks like the photograph, I don't have a problem with it.
You could do a, like a conditional approval if you come back with an image or send it to Katie.
Yeah, I can do that.
If someone's interested in making that.
I'll make that motion.
Something to scale.
There you go, I'll make that motion. I don't know how you want to word that.
So it'd be a motion for Riverside Townhomes to come back with a rendering of the lighthouses to scale to match the image provided.
With the dimensions.
With the dimensions.
Oh, a dimension, yeah.
Okay, so it's not, it's not technically a conditional.
Is it approval, or is it just?
Uh, it'd be an approval. It'd be, well, we can't approve it till we see it, right?
Right.
The condition would be if it comes back.
The signs are already there, so it's just basically delaying another month if we would have.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, let's just, I think I would do it as a regular approval. If they provide that to Katie and it meets the requirements that you mentioned, then it'd be approved, if you guys are okay with that.
Yeah, okay with that.
Jeff?
Personally, again, the signs are already there.
Yeah.
I think we just have them submit what they're gonna do, and we vote on it next month. We have a chance to discuss it and make any other suggested, suggested changes we need to make. It's not like it's gonna harm them, the sign's already there.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, I mean, unless you guys want us to take them down, they're, 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 they're existing, so we're just trying to, we want to comply.
Yeah, we're not really holding anything up.
No.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna need somebody to repeat the motion, please.
We don't need a motion now, can you just come back? Can you just come back and be updated?
Come back with the dimensions and rendering and.
We can do that.
That's a good proposal, yeah.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Okey dokey. Yeah, I was thinking it's gonna be a new sign, but you're right, it's there, so we're not hurting them at all. No postponement of referred items, Commissioner Forum?
I'll just say, you know, sad to see Woody go, he's been sitting next to me for a long time.
Yeah.
Just make sure you just pick someone good to sit next to me.
Yeah, I'll echo what, what you said. He's been here, you guys have been here longer than I, but he's been here for a long time. A lot of contributions to the city, and I know he and his wife also do a lot of work outside of the planning commission in the community, so appreciate everything that they've done. Support on the fire department, beautification committee, a lot of things, so. Been a long, long, long history in the city for that family. Be looking for a motion to adjourn?
I just wanted to mention something real quick too. It's my understanding that the gas station is for sale. And if you recall, last month, we had a short discussion on our vision for the city, twenty, twenty-five years from now. And I did my darndest to try to find a video with the rendering of what the city could potentially look like.
I give it to Katie tonight.
I got it.
Oh, you got it?
From Jeff.
Yeah, and, you know, because it was, we didn't talk a whole lot about it, but in my opinion, gas stations shouldn't be downtown. Just, it's just my opinion, and it's, it's like an opportunity. Unfortunately, it, it was something that I thought might be an opportunity a year from now, five years from now. I never expected it to show up a week or a month after we had a short discussion over it, but.
I mean, our downtown is three vacant buildings and a gas station that's closed, and you're gonna have another vacant building sit there forever, or?
No, but you have to eventually follow what our, our master plan says. I mean, if, if we always worry about, well, we can't do it right now, because, you know, we, we want to generate a little bit of income from a new business or something. I don't think we ever will get to what a long-term version of, of downtown would be.
And, uh, point of sale, ain't it? That's kind of, that's still. That's still going? That's not telling us shut down again.
It's a tough one. I think what people will run into with that is most gas station locations with the dig-up of the tanks are unbuildable locations for like ten to fifteen years because of the
Contamination.
Contamination of the ground, so.
Yeah, it'd be a four-
We'd end up for a long time.
Parking lot for Captain Jim's.
Yeah. Sadly, I think that's what they'll run into. That's probably why they'll have a hard time selling it unless somebody wants to take it over. I think that's owned by, uh,
Speedway.
Seven-Eleven. It's owned by a-
Speedway.
Speedway, yeah.
Yeah, which is owned, which is Seven-Eleven, I think.
Correct.
I called them. I did some investigation on that one. I'm curious what, uh, yeah, it's not hitting their corporate numbers.
I'll have to look into that, because I didn't think that tech removal would cause building issues.
Yeah, the ground, that's why if you see a lot, that's why a lot of like, if you drive around like on Telegraph or wherever and you see those empty gas stations, it's because of the contamination in the ground, so folk can't put certain stuff on it. I don't know the specifics, but. Um, okay. Anything else for Commissioner Form? Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Deport.
Moved in support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Good evening, commission members. Like to call the Downtown Development Authority meeting into order. Since we've already done our pledge of allegiance, I will have Clerk Tomasic please call roll.
Schumate?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Bilk?
Here.
Cox? Frison? Hutchinson?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Pyatt?
Here.
Upholzer?
Do we have a motion to excuse absent members?
Motion to excuse absent members.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk Tomasic, you got that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public comment. Do we have any members of public that wish to address the commission this evening? Well, just a comment from me at the opening. Obviously, we discussed the resignation of John Wood and the need to fill the seat with not only a good neighbor for Jeff, but a strategic partner for the commission, so just know that we're hard at work on that. I did have one priority nomination, but I will be reaching out to everybody offline to make sure that your voice is heard. If you have anybody that you think would be a good fit for this commission, I'd love to hear it. And then we'll work with council to make that appointment on the twenty-fifth, our next council meeting. The second thing I wanted to throw out there is, I wanted to make sure that we had Parks and Recreation Director Reynolds here to give you an update on the Fourth of July. But I intentionally wanted to also make sure we celebrated what I thought was an incredible Fourth of July for the community. And it's thanks to this commission for all the investments and decisions that were made to help facilitate the right approach for such an amazing Fourth of July. In addition to our Director of Public Safety and all the fire and police, DPW and everybody else, Parks and Rec, the commission members, all of those parties that came together. So just thank you profusely, and thank you to this DDA for the investment in the community and the celebration we're able to have. With that being said, I will close public comment. If there is no comment here, and we will move to approval of agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Now we'll get to our approval of previous meeting minutes. DDA members, you will see item A, DDA minutes of seven fifteen twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. That will take us to our acknowledgement of correspondence, and we are very lucky to have Finance Director McQ in here, so I'd love for her to join me up here for a update on A, which is the full year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six DDA budget as of eight fourteen twenty-five.
Included the budget in your guys' packet. I wanted to see if you had any questions. And I also wanted to give everybody a heads up that we're kind of trending towards not spending all of the DDA money from the bond downed. So I did contact the attorney. He got back to me today, and we're probably going to want to re-advertise for a couple of other items, just to make sure that we spend that down before the deadline of, I think I put it, of May twenty twenty-six, to make sure that we have a little extra wiggle, wiggle room with that, so. I just wanted to make y'all aware of that. You'll probably see me again next month with that language and information from the attorney, and is there any questions, comments?
So our balance is sitting at two nineteen one oh five.
For the DDA bond?
For capital improvements?
Capital improvements. Yep, two nineteen one oh five.
Okay.
Yep.
What actually caused that?
What caused that? The cameras. We paid, posed, played, uh, paid a good portion down on the cameras. That was about fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and four dollars and sixty-one cents. And then we also had the Fourth of July. You guys always get dinged right away because Fourth of July,
Yeah.
that's most of.
Yeah.
So you guys get dinged kind of quickly, and then it slows down.
Any questions for budget? Thank you.
Okay.
So I do have a question. So what else could be added?
It would have to be items in the DDA. A community center generator was not in the original or the second advertisement, and I've heard people talk about that a lot, so that would be one of the things that we were thinking about adding. Flooring in City Hall, because this is in the DDA district, and I'm sure, I don't know if anybody here has tripped on this carpet, but
Bubbles over there.
Other folks have. Different, I think we were thinking about also doing windows possibly at the community center building as well. So.
Would the, I guess that would fit into capital expenditures. Okay.
If you guys have anything else that you think might should be added or anything like that, you know, feel free to email me. I think everybody has my email, or give me a call. Email's usually best.
Thank you.
Okey doke. Thank you. Appreciate the update.
Awesome. And then just practically speaking, I know that Amy includes this in the blue bold text, but we are getting to work on all of these projects. So for example, the ones you see, such as the parking lot resurfacing, Katie and I just formalized a signature on some of that documentation. The road, uh, bridge replacement over the Franken public train, again, active execution. Roof repairs, you'll see, obviously, we're waiting on some final information, but we'll progress that work. So the good news is the teams are hard at work to advance these projects on execution front.
Would the generator just be for the main community center or also the cook center?
I mean, I could have it written up for both community centers. I think I only had it for one, because we have one for the DPW already in the bond language, so.
There's inherent like, uh, O and M, right? Obviously, like maintenance. I don't know if that's something, do we, do we pay for the existing one, or do our DPW workers do the maintenance, like oil change on the generator and all that stuff?
We pay for the existing maintenance.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. It might just be something to consider if you do two, maybe they'll-
Yeah. I think the good news is we have a good priority list to target, and some of these, like even like Amy mentioning the windows, right? And not only the investment on updating what are archaic windows, but ultimately it helps drive utility efficiency as well, so it pays dividends in the investment. Thank you, Amy. Any questions for Amy? I just appreciate you for coming to the commission and for bringing these updates regularly. We'll continue to make sure you have updates on this as we track the spend against, and it's good that we'll be able to unlock potentially a couple other projects as Amy mentioned. Next topic. Do we, Katie, would you like a motion to receive and file that? Yep. Let's, before we move on to the next topic, let's get a motion to receive and file the full year twenty-five, twenty-six DDA budget as of eight fourteen twenty-five.
Motion to receive and file DDA budget as of
Eight fourteen.
Eight fourteen twenty twenty-five.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. As I opened up within the public comment section, I'm really excited about the Fourth of July festivities. I've asked Austin to also make sure he carefully considers some of the debrief, so we can capture feedback, you know, what went well, where we want to unlock further opportunities, so I know he's hard at work on that. But Austin, you want to come up and talk them through your item, which is item B, Fourth of July twenty twenty-five expenditure report?
Oh, perfect. All right, so most of the money we spent this year was stuff we usually do, like the porta-potties, the tents. There's a few bands on there, and then you see the eight thousand three hundred thirty for the barricades that you guys approved, which I feel like that was a great purchase. We usually rent or buy, like, we don't permanently have barricades until this year, so we won't see that purchase taken out of future Fourth of July, so you can see where that would help us in the future. Obviously, overall, it was about thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-three cents. Those are all the revenue at the bottom where we got money back. I'm, I'm looking to expand that next year. As you see, we had four vendors, two food vendors, the community center rental, which was the craft show, and then that's what Wade Shows, the carnival gave us, the fifteen hundred. So we got a good little chunk of change back off of that. Not too much was spent on decorations. One twenty-eight ninety-three. We used a lot of existing decorations this year, so I was able to save a little money there. The fireworks, would you guys approve, were obviously the biggest portion, being fifteen thousand.
So next year will be around like twenty-four, twenty-four thousand-ish?
Yeah, twenty-four, twenty-six, because the barricades won't be there in the future.
Maybe some additional decorations or something this year.
Right, we might do.
It was a good-
Additional decorations.
It was a great, uh, I spent like a hundred and fifty bucks on wristbands. It was a good, the rides were good, and what I did notice that I thought was, one, it's pretty wild that they have like electronic ticketing and stuff. I was like, dang, this is, I didn't imagine that they were going to have that, so that was pretty sweet, and then you could buy the stuff in advance. Had a lot of workers.
Oh, yeah.
So there was no like question of who you need to go talk to. So they definitely come in like full bore.
Yeah, they were-
Were they interested in doing it again?
They are interested in doing it again. I've had, I wouldn't say initial talks, but it was kind of our, my closing talk from last year with Mike from Wade Shows, and he said that they are interested in coming back and that he'll talk to me soon. So I'll reach back out. I would love to have them again, if you guys would love to as well. I mean, I think it went really well. I think they were great to work with. All their rides were quality stuff. I mean, they looked good, and a lot of people came and had fun. I heard a lot of good things.
Yeah, their rides were in good shape, and we probably offset their loss at Woodhaven, whatever that's called, Uncle Sam Jam, because of the raid. They canceled all that, so.
Well, I will tell you, comparing Wade to the folks that we had last year, there was a hundred and eighty-degree difference, because I will tell you, even the labor there, some of them had difficulty, you know, speaking English, but not a single one hesitated when I asked, you know, to take care of something. If I found something electrically related, they were on it. They, so it was, it was pretty cool to see that. They were definitely, you know, going always in the right direction, you know, even, even little things that really wasn't my responsibility, like some barricades, like around where they were making some hot tacos and stuff. You know, I was just saying, you know, you guys really need to put something there. It was there within twenty minutes, you know, so, yeah.
And they all had uniforms, and yeah, it's a professional organization. You can tell that they take pride in it, so. Yeah.
Is the fifteen hundred bucks, is that like a set thing in the, in the beginning, the, when they gave us fifteen hundred bucks back in the very bottom?
Uh, they actually were only, they only had to give us a thousand. They opted to fifteen hundred.
Okay, I was wondering.
Part of the contract was negotiated.
Yeah.
I didn't know if it was preset.
Yeah, don't they have to make so much before they, they start giving a little bit back?
This is a guarantee. Previous contracts we've seen require a certain threshold to be met. This contract we negotiated is guaranteed.
Yeah, they put a line item in there, I remember that. That's cool that they upped it too. They did well. There was a lot of people riding through there.
Yeah.
There really was, and their food was good, too.
Any guests you'd like to share?
Uh, that's it for me. I mean, we had a few bands. I think that would probably go down. I think time that the bands would be there would be up, but number of bands would be down, and we'd probably have an hour gap in between. I mean, we had a DJ, obviously, we had DJ Tex on the, on the paper anyway, so he could provide music between, but the turnaround time between bands was a little quick for them to try to get off and on in thirty minutes, so you might see one or two less on the budget for next year. But that's it for me.
Any other feedback for Austin?
No, I think it was, good job. The parade was really good. I know Sunseekers digs in a lot on the parade. That was lo, like, it's long, it's good. Like, I had family that came in to watch it, and they were like, dang, it's a long parade, especially for like a, you know, smaller town, so, yeah.
It heard all positive comments, no negative comments at all.
That's amazing.
Mm-hmm.
Congrats to you and the commission and all the parties, much appreciated.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, I just want to echo. I, I think phenomenal job, and it's amazing to think, if you rewind the tape to last year and what we had to go through with those rides. Big shout out to Commissioner Baker, who's been instrumental on the electrical side every step of the way. But made the right decision last year. We use that as a learning, and you all approved a really professional organization to do this year, and I hope we can secure them for future years, Austin. With that being said, we'll need a motion to receive and file item B, Fourth of July twenty-five expenditure report. Is there a motion?
Motion to receive and file.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We don't have any unfinished business, and we do not have any new business this evening, which brings us to our DDA director's report. Just a couple updates on my end. One is the voluntold Commissioner Bilk and Commissioner Baker. I'll be reaching out to you for a meeting related to the tax assessments and some of the discussion we're going to have there, so I know last meeting you all were voluntold to be-
What are we talking about?
We'll have to have you watch the tape. Last meeting you committed to me that you would help support some of the assessment of-
Oh, no, you got me on the wrong committee.
All right. So I'm going to be reaching out to you all to make sure that I can schedule a meeting and include you. We're doing some internal work on that, as I mentioned in the last meeting. For commission members, the big picture here is we wanted to take a look at the current valuations of residential and commercial properties in the city of Gibraltar, and make sure we understand them as a current administration, and that you all are aware of all the specifics of that equation as it relates to decisions you make around the trajectory of our revenue. So just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. That's the background context I brought up to you last meeting, and Commissioner Bilk and Commissioner Baker hopefully will be a part of some of the subsequent discussions. Second thing I want to say is, you all have asked about the, the ordinance enforcement in different arenas. I just want to give a shout out to Chief and, and Ordinance Officer La Course and our building officials. I hope you feel that when you say something, we do something. Tonight's example on the sign revision was one business who was a part of the list as we took inventory, so just thank you to the departments that are doing it. It's, it's hard for us to be everywhere and watch every single thing as a community. We have a limited amount of resources in the police department, but I think they're doing a great job doing what they can. When they hear something, they do something, and just grateful for the business owner who's making that revision and obviously put it in front of you this evening, and obviously a lot more work to do. Absolutely, and it's, it's a part of the aesthetic of our community, and it's what it should be, so we need to get, get us dialed out to where we should have been. With that being said, is there anything else that you'd like me to bring to future discussions? Anything else that's hot on your mind while we're here in the DDA director's report?
Not at this time.
Okay. Well, that will close the DDA director's report. If there's no other matters, there's no table and referred items, so commission and I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You all have a wonderful evening. Thank you so much.